Good evening, everybody. I will go ahead and call to order the Bristol, Virginia City Council for our regularly scheduled November 14th, 2023 meeting. Please join me in a moment of silence. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good to see a good crowd out tonight. I'm glad you all were able to make it out. I'm going to go ahead and open it up to council comments. I know we've got a few things that we all want to talk about.
I'll go ahead and jump in. I've got a couple of things real quick. I just wanted to mention Veterans Day. We had a very nice ceremony in the park over the weekend. Thank you to those that organized it, but most importantly, thank you to the veterans that have served. I can't imagine, willing to put your life on the line for your family, well, I mean, for your family, I hope I could do that, but for people you don't even know, your community, neighbors across the country, it really is a tremendous, tremendous task, and I just appreciate the folks that have served through our nation's history. So, secondly, I've got three things, so bear with me. Secondly, and this may be mentioned later by city manager, I'm not sure, on the 20th, I believe in Bristol is sponsoring the open house, Christmas open house downtown, so I don't know the hours on that, so check out their Facebook page or their website. Should be a lot of businesses doing special events, special deals, later hours. It should be a great time just to kind of kick off the holiday season. And then, thirdly, two weeks ago, I had the honor of attending the Drug Court graduation of someone who had been dealing with substance abuse issues and had put a lot of work in, a lot of time into cleaning up their lives, doing the program there, and really putting their best foot forward. It was a tremendous accomplishment for that gentleman, and it was truly, hearing his story, he told his story to all of us. It was truly inspiring to hear. I hope those in our community that are struggling with drug addiction, struggling with any type of addiction, can look to stories like that, look to people like that and see a way forward. So, just really appreciate that. Appreciate the work that the team at the Drug Court does, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, our local country radio station, 96.9 WXBQ, was recognized twice last week in the CMA Country Music Association Awards. The morning show, Steve, Ben, and Nikki, was awarded Broadcast Personality of the Year for a Small Market, and the station itself won Small Market Radio Station of the Year. We ought to be really proud of our local broadcasters and the work that they're doing. And their recognition also gets Bristol recognition, so we need to be doubly proud of them.
I was just going to mention a few events. Councilman Holmes, I already mentioned one of them, the Downtown Christmas Open House, which is Monday, the 20th, and then later after Thanksgiving, there'll also be the Christmas Tree Lighting and the Christmas Parade. So, we had the Veterans Day events out here the other day, and then some big ones coming up as well for Christmas, so we're excited about all the stuff happening in downtown.
Not to echo everyone's comments, but it was great to see the crowd out at the Veterans Day celebration on Saturday. And again, thank you to all of our veterans. I know I've got several active duty right now in my family, and several retired, and then several that have passed, but I think it's, I don't think we recognize them enough. So, thank you to all of our veterans, and yeah, we're just really appreciative of everything you gave over the years. I know there's family members I haven't seen in years because they're overseas right now, still fighting for our country, so thank you to all. And then, the second thing, sorry I came in, I feel like I came in on two wheels tonight, but I came straight from Richmond, from the VA One Governors Tourism Summit, and it was really great. We had a record crowd there this year, but I was really excited to see Bristol show up in Richmond. We had a panel discussion from Ally Evangelista, who is the President CEO of Hard Rock Bristol, and so, really to bring, to let people know what's the updates for Hard Rock, what's happening, the jobs created from that, and the economic impact. So, it was really good to see her there, as well as Leah Ross, from the birthplace of country music, and then Matt Bolis and John from Explore Bristol. So, it was exciting to hear all the cheers and appreciation from the tourism industry, from what Bristol's doing.
And I'll just add, you know, a couple of things. You know, I was glad to see so many folks out at the Veterans Day service, as the Vice Mayor and Mr. Holmes had mentioned. I think we had a pretty good turnout for the memorial service itself. And we would always love to see more people come out for the actual parade, you know, I think would be a good thing for us to work on next year. But, you know, it's always good to get together for the ceremony, and we had a good speaker there. Also, as you all know, we had elections a week or two ago, just want to congratulate, you know, we had, nothing contested in the city, but, you know, congratulations to Senator Pillion and Delegate O'Quinn for resounding reelections, and to a lot of our friends in Washington County who got reelected in the area. You know, we have a lot of good servants throughout the region, and glad to see them, glad to see them continuing to serve, and I believe that's all I've got, so I'll move to city manager's comments.
Sure. I'll echo a couple of comments that have been already made tonight. The annual Downtown Christmas Open House is on Monday, November 20th. It starts at 5:30 PM, so go shop at our local merchant stores, and you can also take a carriage ride through downtown. City offices will be closed at noon on Wednesday, November 22nd, through Friday, November 24th, for the Thanksgiving holiday. Check out Facebook and our website for the solid waste collection schedule for these days. Small Business Saturday is November 25th, so remember to shop small this Christmas season. And the Downtown Christmas Tree Lighting is on Sunday this year. Normally, it's on Monday night, but it's on Sunday, November 26th, and those festivities begin at 4:00 PM in Cumberland Square Park.
All right. Thank you very much. Next, we're moving to adoption of the agenda, looking for a motion and a second.
Second.
Motion from the Vice Mayor, second from Mr. Farnham. Please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
All right. Item one of the regular agenda, public hearing for zoning map amendment 02-2023, Brewer Road. I will open the public hearing, and no one has signed up for public comment on this, so staff report. Oh, yeah, please. All right, thank you. Staff report. Wait for him to get the presentation up here.
Hey, there it comes. All right. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Staff has received a request for a zoning map amendment for property located on Brewer Road. It's vacant piece of property, so there is no address, but it's tax map parcel 465A3. And as you can see on the aerial photography area there in the bottom, the star is the piece of property that kind of backs it to the landfill. Technical difficulties today. Okay, there it goes. So, our applicant, Jennifer and Keith Emery, who have made the application to make this zoning map amendment. The property is currently zoned R2, which is single and two-family residential. The request is to amend the zoning to agricultural district with conditions. The proposed conditions that have been proffered by the applicant are as follows: single or two-family residential, accessory uses and accessory dwellings as permitted in the city code, home occupation, utilities major, gardening, the keeping of no more than three horses for personal use, the keeping of no more than two goats for personal use, and the keeping of chickens in accordance with the city code requirements of agricultural uses on residential property, which is currently Section 50 hyphen 136A. And I'll go into a little more detail here in a few minutes. You can see the property zoning. It's surrounded. You have Bristol, Tennessee, basically on one side, then you have some other residential R2, and then you have the M2, the heavy manufacturing, that is basically the Bristol, or the closed now Bristol landfill. Couple of the pictures of the property, just taken from Brewer Road. And then I have a survey of the property that shows the meets and downs description of the 13.97 acres that was done by Steve Cross. So, I'm just kind of going to go back here to the conditions. So, the applicant, the original request for the applicant is that they contacted me so that, because they wanted to purchase the property, build a house, and keep some horses, maybe some goats, for personal use. This is not permitted in a residential district. You do have to go to an agricultural district. There might be some properties in the city that have these types of uses on them, but from my knowledge, they have been grandfathered in before that code was updated in 2021. Since goats and horses are considered livestock, you really have to look at it from an agricultural perspective, so that is the nature of the request. When they came to the Planning Commission in October, there were concerns from the Planning Commission that some of the uses that could take place, about some of the uses that can take place in an agricultural district, specifically some of the potential commercial uses that are allowed in an agricultural district, which might cause harm to the environment or increase traffic in what is basically a residential area. So, that was expressed. They did go ahead and recommend it for the joint public hearing, but there were some concerns that were expressed by the Planning Commission. So, after the meeting, the applicant inquired about some of these issues that were raised by the Planning Commission, and I advised her that there was a potential for a conditional rezoning, which could remove some of the more concerning, to the Planning Commission anyway, permitted uses. A conditional rezoning is exactly what it sounds like. It is legal, and the conditions that are listed here must be proffered by the applicant. Basically, the city can't say, "You can do these conditions only," and it's take it or leave it. It does have to be proffered by the applicant. Also, only uses that are currently permitted in agricultural district can be on this list of proffered uses, so you can't take, like, a car wash that's not typically permitted in agricultural district and put it in there as one of those conditions. So, you can take what's allowed in the agricultural district and kind of pare it down a little bit to do this type of conditional rezoning. In the past, we might have applied for a special use permit as opposed to conditional rezoning. However, that option is no longer available with the code update. And just to give you a little history, the last conditional rezoning requested and passed by the City Council was in 2007, so this is not something that we do that often. There are maybe 25 to 30 properties citywide, going back into the 70s that we know of, that had some conditional rezoning. So, in accordance with Virginia State Code, the request was advertised in the Bristol Herald Courier on Tuesday, October 30th, and Tuesday, November 7th, 2023. Adjoning property owner notices were sent Wednesday, November 8th, 2023. The purpose of a conditional zoning per our code, it's the purpose of this section to provide a more flexible and adaptable zoning method to cope with situations found in such zones through conditional zoning whereby zoning reclassification may be allowed subject to certain conditions proffered by the zoning applicant, for the protection of the community that are not generally applicable to the land similarly zoned as allowed by the Code of Virginia 15.2 hyphen 2296. The provisions of this section shall not be used for the purpose of discrimination in housing. There have been no previous similar zoning map amendment requests to the knowledge of staff. As I mentioned before, the property is vacant, the existing land, or the existing zoning is R2, single and two-family residential. The future land use map designation is heavy industrial, which was a bit of a surprise to me when I looked at that. I don't know if it was just because it was an extension of the landfill, but that's something that we will definitely look at areas like this in the update of the comprehensive plan. I think most of us might agree that the utilities that might be available on the road system there is probably not suited for heavy industrial, so. The parcel is 13.97 acres. To my knowledge, there has been no land use on this property before it's been vacant since it's been part of the city of Bristol, Virginia. It's basically trees and grass. All right. So, as I mentioned before, the applicant has submitted a zoning map amendment application and application fee to the city. The applicant proposes to rezone the tract from the current R2 residential zoning to AC agricultural zone with conditions. It's the intent of the applicant to use the property to construct a single-family dwelling and a barn so that they can have horses, goats, and possibly chickens in the future for personal use. They will not be used for boarding or for business purpose. It is just for their own personal use. Residential districts do not allow livestock and only allow chickens under certain conditions. I have already gone through the proffered conditions earlier. The property fronts on a public street, Brewer Road, for approximately 500 feet. This section of Brewer Road is located in and controlled by Bristol, Tennessee. The existing uses bordering the subject tract are residential to the south, west, and east, and the recently closed landfill is located to the north, although there is no direct way to get from the landfill to this property. The only access is from Brewer Road. In your staff report, I have listed what is permitted in a agricultural district, so you can kind of look and see what is there before. You know, there is a potential, if it's agricultural, for a commercial greenhouse, winery, overnight recreational development. These are uses that, based on looking at the property and the existing land use, that are probably not conducive to that area. So, another reason why some of these conditions were proffered, and the request is as it is. The comprehensive plan does not specifically address this area. As I mentioned before, the future land use map, which was updated and revised in 2019, shows the subject property as heavy industrial. That involves uses which are larger in scale and may include the processing of chemicals, plastics, refineries, mining, and industrial machinery. These can have visual noise traffic or environmental impacts on adjacent tracks. Impacts based on staff comments, local traffic. So, single or two-family residential is currently allowed, and the proffered conditions are similar in nature. Traffic should not be impacted. There should be no adverse impacts on natural resources if the proposed rezoning is allowed. City staff will require all environmental-related permitting, if necessary, to be obtained and approved prior to the development, including soil and erosion control and stormwater management. Connection to public water and sewer will be required by Bristol, Virginia Utilities. The school system, the proposed amendment should have no impact on the local school system. Parks and Recreation, there should be no impact on the local parks and recreation services and facilities. Will you have a comment under Emergency Services? The fire chief commented that he has no concerns. Our Fire Marshal, Eric Belevins, did comment that the hydrant location and flows in the area are acceptable for usage described in the application. The conditions proffered by the applicant are acceptable and would not create any additional response issues with this change. Amending the zoning would be acceptable. So, for water, wastewater, and utilities, Richard Atkins of BVU commented that the area is currently served by the BTES, Bristol, Tennessee Essential Services Electric System. Water and sewer would be served by Bristol, Tennessee as well. I have sent a request to the City of Bristol, Tennessee for comments. I have yet to receive any. I will get back with them again and try to get something by the time a recommendation is made as well. But there are properties in that area, residences, that do have water, sewer, and electric that are in Bristol, Virginia, so it would just be one more connection, but I do want to try to get that information specifically for everyone. Transit does not serve this area, so it should have no impact. Our Economic Development Specialist commented, "I do not believe this would have any negative impacts on economic development. I would not anticipate this property being used as heavy industrial as the future land use map indicates. Agricultural with conditions seems to be a good use for the property," and our Public Works Director, Jake Chandler, had no comments. And that is all.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Dietrich. I will go ahead and close our public hearing and ask the Planning Commission to do the same.
Thanks. We hereby close this meeting.
Thank you. Item two, consideration of salary and full-time employee increases. Staff report.
Counsel, the Virginia Compensation Board met on September 28th, 2023, and approved additional budgeted funding for the Constitutional Offices pursuant to Chapter 1, 2023, General Assembly Special Session 1 Acts of Assembly, Amendments to the Fiscal Year 24 Budget effective December 1, 2023. The Compensation Board increases include targeted increases, compression increases, and 2% salary increases for the Sheriff's Office, the Commissioner of Revenues Office, the Treasurer's Office, the Circuit Court Clerk's Office, and the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. Additionally, the Compensation Board approved increases include restoration of one unfunded position in the Commissioner of Revenues Office and one unfunded position in the Treasurer's Office. In order to be consistent across city offices, a 2% increase is recommended for all city positions. The estimated fiscal year 24 city cost for these increases is $228,800. This cost includes an additional funding to the Bristol Public Library for the city's share of salary increases, which is 50% of a 2% increase effective December 1, 2023. Staff recommends that council approve the Compensation Board approved increases, including the two funded FT increases and a 2% salary increase for city-funded positions effective December 1.
All right. Thank you very much. Looking for a motion and a second to take action on this.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the salary increases as presented.
Second?
Does that include the funded full-time employee positions, the two?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Motion for Mr. Farnham, second from Mr. Holmes. Council discussion.
So, without this, we essentially have a situation where some employees would be getting a raise, and some people would not. Some of them working in the same departments very closely with each other, doing the same jobs, and some get it and some don't.
That's correct.
Without this. Okay. Okay.
And just for clarity and public information, I know we discussed this previously, where will the $228,000 come from, and how do we do it year over year?
That'll be from interest earnings on cash that we have in our interest-bearing accounts.
I think this is great. I'm glad we can do this and keep our employees on the same level. I know we've, if we don't do this, we would have a struggle, we would struggle with staffing. We'd struggle finding folks for, excuse me, the lesser-paid positions if we needed to fill them, and we've had some issues over the last little bit where we've not been able to fill every position like we need to, so we need to make sure that we're paying our folks correctly at the right rate so that we can get good folks in here that want to work for the city, want to work for the citizens, so this is great.
I agree. I do think, you know, if we don't do this, all of a sudden, we go from, you know, being on the forefront in southwest Virginia, especially for being able to pay our police officers and stuff like that, to really having to compete hard with county sheriff's offices. So, I think this is, it's, I'm glad that we are able to afford to do this with the money that we have, and I think this will be a good move for our city employees. Hearing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
All right. Item three, supplemental appropriation of $128,358. Staff report from Mr. Phillips.
Mayor and members of council, this item is a supplemental appropriation of $128,358, all within the general fund, beginning in the Police Department. Appropriate fiscal year 2024 remaining grant funds for the COPS Hiring Program Grant, $120,942, City Sheriff. Appropriate overtime reimbursement received from Highlands Community Services for Sci-Tec Officer Overtime, $1,066. And Economic Development, appropriate grant proceeds from the Virginia Brownfield Restoration and Economic Redevelopment Assistance Fund that will be dispersed to local businesses in fiscal year 2024, $6,350, and staff recommends that council approve the supplemental appropriation as listed. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Looking for a motion and a second to take action on this.
I move to approve the supplemental appropriation of $128,358.
Second?
All right. Motion from the Vice Mayor, and second from Mr. Holmes. Council discussion.
So, on this, it looks like it's granted money that the departments have received, so other than the one thing, that's the overtime reimbursement of $1,066, but everything else is from the grants that have come in for those departments, right?
That's correct. That's correct.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Phillips, for presenting that. Hearing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
All right. Next item is matters to be presented by members of the public for non-agenda items. We have a couple of people signed up. First is Mr. Slagel.
Thank you. I'm here to speak about the proposed removal that I've heard of about the Confederate statue that's sitting over here across the road in the parking lot. Mr. Holmes opened this meeting by thanking the people who answered the call of duty to their country. I'm the grandson of James Owensore and the great-great-grandson of George Slagel, who answered the call of duty for their country in 1862. Their country in 1862 were the Confederate States of America, it was not the United States of America. They lived in Virginia, which had seceded from the Union at that time. This is part of history and heritage. I'm not here to spread hate. There's nobody here who can erase history. It's terrible, as some parts of it may have been. It is history. Be it good, be it bad, it's history. We should learn from it. The statue's been moved twice in my lifetime. I don't know how many times before this. I think it was dedicated in 1920. I know it's been moved twice in my lifetime. It's in bad shape because it's been moved twice. It's sitting in an area right now, the only way you can see is if you go to look for it. I'm not here to spread hate on anyone, but who here can erase my heritage? Why, who thinks they can do that? History is history, be it good or bad, and that statue needs to stay where it is. Do I agree with everything that's happened in my lifetime? No, I don't. But that's part of my heritage, and nobody here is qualified to erase that or remove it. The statue needs to stay where it is, and I'm going to leave you with something that my grandfather told me 50 years ago, probably. If you have to do something undercover of darkness or in secret, what you're doing's wrong. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next person is Mr. Warren.
Good evening. My name is Jim Warren, and I reside at 1310 Green Acres Road. I am a lifelong resident and citizen of Bristol, Virginia. The memorial monument was paid for by Colonel James M. Barker, a prominent citizen of Bristol, Tennessee and Civil War veteran. In the waning years of his life, he presented it to the local chapters of the United Dollars of the Confederacy in 1920 for their dedication and safekeeping. The sculptor named it simply "The Common Soldier." It bears no inscriptions or symbols of the Confederacy or even a mention of the Civil War, only Colonel Barker's words, "In memory of the brave men and noble women of Tennessee and Virginia from 1861 to 1865." I dare say sadly that we'd be hard-pressed to find many young people today who would grasp the significance of those dates. The monument's sole purpose and intent was, and remains, to solemnly honor the memory of our ancestors, not to glorify the war or the South, and certainly not to offend anyone ever. Mayor Osborne commented on its location in an email shared with me, quote, "It sits at the edge of a parking lot. It's back to the road, and it is obscured by trees," end quote. Over the weekend, the Bristol Herald Courier ran a moving commentary by Reverend Jackie Knopflin, the lady who made the motion to relocate, or made the suggestion to relocate the, the monument, entitled, "Remembering is Powerful: On the Importance of Honoring All Veterans." Jackie cited two powerful quotes that I'd like to share. First, from the Book of John, Chapter 15, Verses 13, King James Version. "Greater love hath no man than this, that a man lay down his life for his friends." And later, she cites President George W. Bush from a speech in 2016, quote, "A great nation does not hide its history. It faces its flaws and corrects them," end quote. The words of John the Apostle and George the W. hit the nail on the head in regards to this matter. Let's please not allow ourselves to continue picking at the ugly scab of a wound 160 years into its healing. Instead, let's strive to live together in harmony, tolerance, acceptance, until the wound and the scar disappear. As a city and a citizenry, let's instead continue to focus our energies and our resources to resolve the more pressing issues we have on our plate that affect everyone every day. And please, let's allow the lonely old Sentinel to always keep his quiet and weary vigil where he stands tonight, undisturbed and at peace. He's too old and too brittle to survive yet another eviction. Thank you for your time and for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Last person signed up is Ms. Knopflin.
I'm in chair, so I got to figure out how to work.
Oh, you're fine.
Hi, I'm Jackie Knopflin. I live at 143 McCotter Circle, Bristol, Virginia. I'm a business owner, owner of a couple of houses and properties. I pay a lot of taxes. I want to reiterate, and it's good to know that someone is reading my article in the newspaper, that was done on purpose. I meant every word of it. And thank you, Jim Warren. If you listen to what I said when I made my first presentation to the council, I wasn't trying to deter, disturb history. I never said anything about history or one's history. I really couldn't care less about the Confederate flag and those that fly around with it on their trucks and so forth. I fly the United American flag at my house 24/7 every day of the year. That's at my home. Real military family. Have uncles that are gone, dead and gone, family members that fall under that flag that's right behind you there. That's the flag that I was born under, and that's the flag that I serve under. Now, having said that, I didn't say anything about anyone's history. What I said was, do you think as a black woman that I should have to pay taxes in our parks and recreation for a Confederate flag that reminds, or Confederate statue that reminds every minority slave what the slave and so forth was back in those days? Did you know that in 1920, when Jim Warren mentioned that, that was the time that the KKK walked through Bristol? That was the exact year that the KKK walked through Bristol, and they couldn't find anyone else to buy the, that statue other than the daughters of the Confederate. It doesn't belong to the city. I've done my homework, and I know you have. We've done our homework. It doesn't belong to the city. And I know what the law says, too, about voting, but the fact of the matter is, it was moved over there without a vote. It was moved over there by council that none of you even knew it. As a matter of fact, it wasn't even recorded in the newspaper when it was moved that third time and where it was moved. It was a very small article, if you do find one. All I'm saying is move it off the property that I'm paying for. I do not want to pay for a statue that says they want to keep me in slavery. That's the point. And as smart as some of these people are, Jim, you know better, as smart as some people are to bring this up and make a big thing out of it like they did in Tassau and like they did at the places, take it and move it somewheres where you can honor it. Take it and move it somewheres where it won't be deteriorating because of the water damage there. Take it and move it somewheres where our city workers won't have to go over there, sweep up the leaves, keep it cleaned off, and do all that on the grounds where I'm paying the taxes. It doesn't make sense, and I think it's not, I don't think that is fair. Now, last thing I'm going to say before that red light comes on, if I was to take a kneel to that flag right there, a lot of people would just say, "Oh, that's horrible." Oh, but do you understand why someone will take a kneel to that flag when things like this is allowed in America? When things like this is allowed in our small cities? When we're trying to pull Bristol together and build up? When we're on a roll right now, and then here comes this? It's not about your history. It's about, well, now I'm going to pay taxes for it to be there. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much. Final item is the consent, is the consent agenda. Looking for a motion in a second to take action on the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
A second.
All right. Motion from Mr. Holmes, second from the Vice Mayor. Please call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Nave.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
There being no further business, we stand it earned.